The first of the county board's CIP work sessions on the fiscal year 2023 through 2032, capital improvement plan. This is Chair Kitty Crystal, speaking for those joining us online, joined by all of my colleagues today. We are going to kick us off with some very expensive, very important, but I guess also expensive, areas of infrastructure, transportation, debt service, and metro. And so we are going to begin with, I think our plan today is we'll have staff do a presentation on transportation, pause for some discussion. We are joined by the Chair of the Transportation Commission, which has considered the CIP and has some thoughts for us. And then we will move into discussion on debt and metro. Everyone should know that today's presentations are available on the county's website at arlingtonva.us, along with some really exciting new tools to better understand the CIP, including maps, overlays of different priorities, and other areas. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it to the county manager to introduce the staff presenting today.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Before I turn it over to staff, I did want to talk very briefly, I wanted to give one or two slides of sort of context about the CIP as we head into it. And I know we had a presentation in front of the board previously, but if we can, I think we have the first few slides to pull up. We do, every year we do, it used to be called the CAFR, and I don't even know what it's called anymore, the, the, Akfar, okay, they just moved the letters around. As of fiscal '21, you know, we do an assessment of how, what's the value of the assets we have or own in the county? And it's about two, close to $2.5 billion. We have $1.6 billion of assets, and the schools have about $850 million of assets, which means we have a lot of things that we own that we need to maintain. And I suspect that this number is actually an undervaluation of all the assets that we have all over the county. So in our 10-year CIP, we're proposing $3.9 billion of investments, and that's a 41% increase over our previous 10-year CIP from four years ago. So we have, we're going to be spending a lot of time, on this last bullet I talked about, there's 240 separate programs and projects in the CIP. And we're obviously in three work sessions, not going to be able to spend time talking about each of the 240 programs and projects. But we have a write-up on each of them in the, that's online, that covers technology, facility improvements, a lot in transportation, a lot about open space, water, sewer. And then we also, right now, we're in the middle of delivering on projects that this board authorized and the community voted on over the last many years. And we've seen the most visible success in some of the larger projects that have delivered literally in the last year, if not the last months. Long Bridge Aquatic Center, the La Brea Community Center, and last month, Jenny Dean Park. So that, that's a little bit about framing on that. Also, I know that when we go through the conversation, you'll hear a lot about projects. I did want to talk a little bit about what's going on with, if we go to the next slide. We are assuming when we go through and sort of model, and Jason Fries does that for us with our financial advisors, that we're going to be selling bonds, and we're in a different interest rate environment than we were before. We have a 5% assumption on those. And also, our budget and revenue growth is somewhere between 2% and 2.5%, probably on the conservative side, but we tend to do that. And then inflation, we will be happy to answer questions. When we were putting together the CIP over the last several months, we went from a period where the, our gut was telling us things were transitory, and then, uh-oh, they're not transitory, they're getting really high. And so as we go through each of the projects, we did, on some of the larger projects, we were fully acknowledging and including that the cost of materials are going up, and we have supply chain pressures. But I'm not going to sit here and tell you that we actually know what's going to happen. So it is a 10-year plan. The beauty of that is that we will be able to adjust it. By the time we get around to actually building these projects, the numbers will change. So with that, I'm going to turn it, I think, over to Karen, who has spent a lot of time, and if the public is going to pay attention to one thing, I hope you'll pay attention to this, which is our CIP interactive map. Because we heard, I've always heard, these books are thick, the projects have a lot of detail, how do we understand what's going on? And you know, when I became manager, I wanted to, my idea was, I want people to know what we're inflicting on them, wherever they are, so they can go to a map and find out what's going on, hit a button, and see what's going on. So over to you, Karen.
Thank you, Mark. So as we discussed, we, this, as part of this CIP process, we created this new CIP interactive map. And as you can see, we've got different ways to filter the programs across the top. We have legends down the left side, and we have an overlay from the census tract from 2020. What I'll do is to walk through how to actually navigate through, but wanted to talk a little bit first about some of the assumptions here. We did not include every single capital project in this map. We included the major projects of significance here. We have three statuses included, projects that are completed, those are projects that have been completed over the past two years, projects that are currently funded, and those projects are in various stages of implementation, whether in the planning phase, the design phase, or if they're in construction. And then the proposed projects from fiscal years '23 and '24. We do not have the entire 10-year CIP included, but we do have up through fiscal year '24. And so with that, I will go in, oh, sorry. Everything that could go wrong will go wrong. Okay. So the first thing you'll notice when you open up the map is here to the left is a how-to-use document that will give you easy tips on how to navigate through the document. Again, as I mentioned, across the top, we have the different ways to filter by the program, the program category, the filter status, the associated master plans, and then we're able to zoom into civic associations where the users will be able to see which projects or programs are impacting them directly. Along the left-hand side, we have various legends. So as you'll see here on the map, there are different types of icons, and those icons are represented here on the left for each of the different programs that we see. As I mentioned, we also have an overlay from the 2020 census tracts. And so the blue shading demonstrates the percentages of people of color throughout the county. And then finally, here on the left, you'll see a list of all of the projects that are included on the map. So as we change the filters across the top, the projects that you see on the map will change, and the list of projects along the left-hand side will change as well. So since we're working with transportation today, we will go in and look at a transportation project, we'll filter by transportation, and then we'll go in and look at a funded project. As you noticed, all of the projects that show up on the map change, as well as the list of projects here on the left-hand side. So you're then able to scroll through the different projects. We'll choose the Army-Navy Drive Complete Streets project. You'll notice here, when you click on it, and I'll do it again so that you can see You can see that the project highlights in green wherever, when you choose that project. This pop-up that pulls up shows the name of the project, the program category, the status, whether it's complete, funded, or if it's proposed, with a brief description. For many of our projects, we have a link for more info, where you're able to click on this link, and it'll take you out to another document on the internet that gives more details. So for instance, when you click here, it takes you out, and you can see the procurement status, when it's gone out to bid, when it's due to be complete, various details about the public process, and other details that you may want to know. This is not included for every single project, but on certain projects, you will find that more info link. So one thing about each of the projects, you'll see the icons, as we mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, the ones that are listed here on the left. When you zoom in, all of the projects are shown as a polygon, meaning it shows the perimeter of the project. And so when we zoom in, you'll see the highlighted blue area around the perimeter of the project. So you can see here, this is where this particular project is shown in the map. And so those are the main pieces to see with the map and how to navigate for a specific project.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Karen. Because I know, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Crawford, who's going to go through the PowerPoint presentation, try to pay attention, because I know you'll all be playing with the map, so, over to you, Sarah.
Well, thank you again. My name is Sarah Crawford, I'm the Assistant Director of Transportation, and I'll be joined in presentation today by Vijay Huffman, our Transportation Funds Manager. And then following what I hope we'll be able to get through, which is a pretty detailed presentation, Dennis Leach, our Director of Transportation, will also be available for questions. So with that, I'm
I'm coming.
No, no, that's fine. As Ms. Tally's pulling up the presentation, I just wanted to note that the Transportation CIP, the Proposed CIP, advances a number of the county's goals, in addition to those that are outlined in the Master Transportation Plan. We have a goal of being consistent with our designation in the biophilic network. We want to minimize or reduce impervious surface as we construct projects, incorporate street trees wherever possible, and install native plantings. Similarly, over the past several decades, our transportation program has supported many sustainability goals, ensuring transit investment supports our private development, and then constructing multimodal facilities for people to get around. This shifts behaviors away from single occupant vehicles to more environmentally friendly transit options. This CIP continues that tradition and is also responsive to CEP goals, namely through the investments that we're making in the art operations and maintenance facility and our art fleet. We're also continuing commitments to provide transportation infrastructure and service with equity in mind. While that's not a stated goal in the Master Transportation Plan, equity is a factor that staff uses as a filter when considering new projects. And finally, the CIP continues to advance the vision of zero serious injuries or fatalities on our transportation network. Safety's always been at the forefront of our projects, but we're now better able to analyze those hazards and quantify potential improvements more methodically. Shifting to the next slide, we'll give some key highlights and takeaways that we hope to leave you all with today. We'll go through all of these different projects that you see in the screen under Complete Streets and Transit later in the presentation. Again, as I just mentioned, Vision Zero is embedded throughout our Transportation Capital Program, and namely in the Street Safety Improvement Program. We're also continuing to pursue partnerships with third parties to be more efficient in our delivery and implementation of the capital program, both with private development and with external agencies such as VDOT. We have also ensured that our pay-go and bond requests are limited simply to state-of-good repair and maintaining the assets that we have in the right of way. We also have a slide that notes the responsiveness to board guidance from last CIP, as well as our strategic approach to federal funding. Moving to the next slide, we go into a little bit of an update on the response to the guidance that you all provided to us at the adoption of the three-year CIP just last year. We have embarked upon a feasibility study on Arlington Boulevard Trail between roughly George Mason and Jackson Street. We have a consultant onboard, and we'll begin engagement this summer to determine what could be feasible for that trail connection in that spot on Arlington Boulevard. We are moving well along on our Columbia Pike initiatives, the multimodal streets improvements. We are ready to go on two of the segments, and we'll bring to bid the two remaining segments later this year. We anticipate full completion of that multimodal project by 2026. For the Columbia Pike Transit Stations, we are beginning to receive delivery, as of last month, of the components for the first eight stations. Those will be installed this summer, and we're really thrilled to see that progress on the Pike. Similarly, for Transit Signal Priority, we completed a study and are working towards implementation on Langston Boulevard and at the west end of Columbia Pike in the near term, with other corridors to follow. We've also begun interviewing companies to pilot electric buses on our art routes, to see how these types of buses perform. And we're conducting a study of zero-emission bus feasibility to see what that feasibility looks like for our art service, not only service provision, but also our facilities and our actual buses. And we'll complete that by the end of the year. And finally, I think it goes without saying that the map that Ms. Tally just presented gives us a good understanding, with the links that you can click on, about how the projects tie back to the MTP, Vision Zero, CEP, and other variety of planning efforts.
So on this next slide, you can see our proposed 10-year CIP. It is $1.4 billion, and there are a lot of numbers, so I'm, we'll try to use this pointer to highlight certain numbers. It is $1.4 billion, and it is after a 20% implementation adjustment that we are proposing. Now, before I explain what the implementation adjustment factor is and what the rationale for it is, I just would like to draw your attention to a few highlights of the submitted CIP. So the submitted CIP, as you can see, is $1.75 billion, and it is heavily front-loaded. About 2/3 of the spend is in the first five years. And as we go through the programs, I'll sort of explain why. So with Complete Streets, which is a total of $754 million submitted, we have about, again, 2/3 of it in the first five years, and we have a few large projects that we are looking to implement. So in the first five years, for example, we will be spending about $110 million on Columbia Pike streets in this. We are also spending over $40 million on bridge renovation. In particular, this is for the two bridges, one over West Glebe Road and the second in Arlington Bridge Road Bridge. Moving down to transit, the transit program is actually even more heavily skewed to the first five years. Over 80% of the spend of, for the transit program is in the first five years. And in transit, we have several large projects that we are moving to implement in these years. For example, we have the Art O&M Facility, which is about $100 million. We have Boston West Entrance, $150 million project, Crystal City East, another $100 million project. We also have the Transitway Extensions. So capital, of course, by nature, is fairly lumpy, and it just so happens that we have a number of these large projects that are sort of, you know, getting, have completed design or getting near to completing design, and we will be implementing them in these first five years. Now, the later years, the transit CIP does fall off, and that is because we will be updating the Transit Strategic Plan, which will be completed next June, and that will then help inform the next cycle of investments for transit. Similarly, I actually failed to mention that with Complete Streets, the, the update that is important for us to identify and prioritize projects for Complete Streets is the update to the Master Transportation Plan. Moving down the line, we've got Maintenance Capex, and Maintenance Capex does include our paving program as well as bridge maintenance. It also includes, in this CIP for the first time, our new sidewalks program. And Maintenance Capex, because of the nature of it, it does increase every year at the rate of inflation roughly, as does Transportation Capital Program Administration, which is on the next line, and that just goes up a little bit over the years. And then finally, we come down to operating costs. The majority of what you see in operating costs is operating costs associated with art expansion. And this is expansion that has occurred, as well as expansion we are anticipating in the future years. So you can see that this slide actually does step up quite a bit with anticipated expansion. And all of these then roll up to our submitted CIP of $1.75 billion. And the reason we are proposing an implementation adjustment factor of 20%, and this is similar to what we did in the fiscal year 2022, adopted CIP, it's because we have a number of factors that can cause delays in our projects. So it could be anything from securing easements to waiting on third parties to act, like sometimes we have to wait on WAMAR or readout approvals, or we're waiting for a private developer to complete their development. It could also be, after we start construction, sometimes there are unforeseen site conditions that can delay and sometimes just drag out the construction process. And all of these factors that can delay our projects are really unpredictable, and there's no way to know which projects in particular will be impacted. So we have chosen to not go the path of modifying or, you know, doing execution adjustments to individual projects. We feel that that would convey a false sense of accuracy. It is actually, in our opinion, sort of what we are proposing, is just doing an overall implementation adjustment. And while it is 20% of the submitted CIP, because the CIP is heavily front-loaded, the factor is much higher in the earlier years, and then it tapers off to nothing in the later years. So I think with that, we've got the $1.4 billion, which is our proposed CIP. So with that, I think we can move on to the next slide. This slide shows the breakdown of the $1.4 billion by program and also by funding source. The programmatic view is fairly similar to the last 10-year adopted CIP. By funding source, again, similar to the last 10-year CIP, you can see that TCF, including CNI and NBTA Local, are our largest source of funds, and that's 30% of the funds. Relative to the last 10-year CIP, I would say the two most noteworthy changes, one is federal grants are a much higher source of funds for us, this CIP. In the last 10-year CIP, it was only about 1% from federal sources. This CIP, we have about 7% we are hoping to get from federal sources. We actually have a slide that Ms. Crawford will be going through, that shows all the federal opportunities that we plan to pursue. And then the other noteworthy change I would want to highlight in the CIP is actually bonds is much lower as a percent of funding source relative to the last CIP, to the last 10-year CIP. And that is actually a good segue into the next slide, which is our proposal for the bond referendum in November of this year. So we are proposing a referendum of $10 million. And as you can see from here, this is really off a state-of-good repair for our bridges, for street lighting, for paving. And I would like to sort of point out that this $10 million is 50% lower than what we, what would have been proposed in the fiscal year 2022 CIP for this November. So in that CIP for this November, we actually had roughly $20 million, we have cut it in half to $10 million. We were able to achieve that in a couple of different ways. One is for our bridge renovation program, we were able to put in federal sources of funding to the tune of $15.9 million that we identified. And then also in our paving program, we were able to reduce our ask, because we've had a few mild winters and we've had some balances accumulate. I should mention that for the bridges, we do have an agreement with Alexandria whereby we actually share the cost for renovating the, the West Glebe Road Bridge and the Arlington Bridge Road Bridge. So that $15.9 million is shared with Alexandria. And with that, I will hand it back to Ms. Crawford.
Okay, great. As Ms. Huffman mentioned, we'll spend a little bit of time talking about our strategy for the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and all of the different federal programs that were made available to jurisdictions from that act. We have reviewed the immense list of programs and have selected what we believe to be those that are the best fit for our community and our transportation network, both in terms of size and composition. We're trying to balance the goal of leveraging external funding, which is always a good thing, with the additional cost and time of administering projects that have federal funds. Most of the applications for these programs require extensive detail and consultant support to develop a benefit cost analysis, and there's often a low rate of success, unfortunately demonstrated by our unsuccessful Road to Zero application. However, we feel that the programs listed on this slide really represent the best opportunity for the county, and I'll note that we did, we were unsuccessful with our first RACE Grant application for the Arlington National Cemetery Wall Trail. How after, after, however, after a debrief with USDOT, we feel like we've made some enhancements to the application, that we do feel pretty well positioned for this second round, and are hopeful. One of the things that we're doing now with the Notice of Funding Opportunity that was announced for the Safe Streets and Roads for All program, is looking through our program to try to identify a best-fit project that's in its beginning phases, so that we can begin the federal process on that project. If we don't have something ready this round, we'll be able to be poised for the next round of funding. Moving to the next slide, I won't go into much detail on this, since Ms. Tally covered that very well at the beginning, this simply shows a map of the investments that are represented on, on the, in the online map. So shifting to the next slide, this map represents projects in the Transportation CIP related to the goal of achieving racial equity in our capital programming. There's two metrics here that I'll, I'll review, and then I'll describe a little bit about how we use this map. Then those two metrics are Title VI Areas and Equity Emphasis Areas. As a recipient of federal funding per Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, we're required to show how use of funds does not discriminate on the basis of race, color, or national origin, as well as how our projects serve areas with higher concentrations of lower-income households. The Transportation Planning Board, the region's federally designated metropolitan planning organization, developed Equity Emphasis Areas as a lens through which localities can inform future investment decisions. And so the methodology for the, the sort of purple areas, the Equity Emphasis Areas, is based on regional metrics and is therefore different than those metrics that we evaluate through Title VI, which is based on Arlington income levels and minority population levels. And so looking at this map, we can see that some of the investments that we've been making over time are responsive to locations with higher areas of people of color and lower-income populations. However, we do note through this map, and also noting that the transportation portfolio was not historically developed with racial equity in mind, as I mentioned before, racial equity is not included in the Master Transportation Plan. But it's clear from the map that we do have further studies to conduct that will inform future investments in some of these areas with higher concentration of people of color and low-income households. And so some of the studies that I'll review on subsequent slides will, will move the needle a little bit, but we still have work to do in areas that will require additional study to ensure that we are programming our capital investments in ways to ensure that we are programming our capital investments in ways that achieve racial equity. Shifting to the next slide, we'll look at some of our recent achievements. On this slide, we've outlined projects that have recently started construction, and I'll just I'll I'll note the three that are on in pictures. We recently broke ground on the Pentagon or the Crystal City Potomac Yard Transitway Extension to Pentagon City, Segment One of that extension, as well as its Twelfth Street Complete Street Component, which is really exciting. On the bottom-left picture, we have the West Gleeb Bridge that started construction that has recently closed due to additional structural deterioration. And then finally, in the lower-right picture, we have the Eighteenth Street Sidewalk in Pentagon City. We also wanted to highlight some of our completed projects on this slide. Much of this we reviewed in the Fiscal Twenty-three Budget Presentation. So in the interest of time, I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, but to just note that many of the improvements that we've recently completed expand pedestrian facilities and access to that vulnerable user population. So moving right along, we wanted to take a step back and talk a little bit about how the investments in the CIP continue what I'll call the Arlington Tradition of Development. We didn't end up with a multimodal transportation network that we have today by chance. It came from years of planning and for development and the associated transportation projects that were all grounded in that pivotal decision to route Metro Rail through one of our major commercial corridors rather than on the interstate. And as you can see from the images on the slide, that result has been transformational. This redevelopment and multimodal transportation investment has really had an impact on congestion, on environmentally sustainable travel options, and multimodal accessibility for all incomes. However, we're still improving and evolving, and that's what the bulk of this presentation will focus on. On the next slide, we just wanted to provide some metrics to how that growth pattern has impacted people's behaviors. Annual vehicle miles traveled for all roads has trended downward over the time period noted on the slide. We have not felt that recent traffic data serves as a useful example for comparison to historic counts, mainly due to the impacts of the pandemic. We have, however, been been doing traffic counts and tracking traffic data. We're still below pandemic levels on our arterials. However, some of the regional arterials, such as Arlington Boulevard, are approaching pre-pandemic levels of traffic. I will note that part of the shift in the line graph is also due to the fact that because of that development, there are a lot more carless or car-light Arlington households than there were previously. So people have made behavior choices not to buy a vehicle, which inherently impacts vehicle miles traveled. The graph on the right simply shows the level of daily traffic on some of our major arterials from nineteen ninety-six, most of which are trending downward. So these charts demonstrate that the impact of coordinating multimodal transportation and smart growth really does have an impact on environmental sustainability and a reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. And this is important because transportation within and through the county contributes to about thirty-six percent of Arlington's total greenhouse gas emissions. And finally, we wanted to review a set of data that reviews Arlington's transportation mode choice related to regional mode choice. The Transportation Planning Board conducts a regional travel survey every ten years to understand how travel habits around the region change, and it also informs the travel demand model, the regional travel demand model. This doesn't yet include micro mobility devices, but we'll certainly be curious in twenty twenty-eight to see how that recent trend has impacted what will then be the last ten years. So just to spend a bit of time on this data, Arlington residents are represented in the blue bars, and they drive now less than they did ten years prior, both alone and with others. And this is a distinct trend from the regional average, which has single occupant trips increasing to almost sixty percent of the mode share, which is it's just you can see the impact on the screen. It's it's pretty striking. And unfortunately, regionally, both car-pulling and walking share significantly decreased. But the walk mode for Arlington residents increased by about eight percent of the mode share, which represents a significant shift in behavior over that ten-year period. And one thing to note, we've been recognized as a gold-level walk-friendly community by the Walk Friendly Community Program. We've recently applied for platinum designation, so we're keeping our fingers crossed to see that outcome. And just in closing on some of the data that we've reviewed, these historic decisions and investments that were made decades ago really helped get us to where we are today as a multimodal community, and we're hopeful that the investments that we'll be making over the next ten years will further improvements so that people do have options to continue that shift towards walking, biking, and using transit. So now we'll get to the heart of the program and move into the next couple, well, next couple dozen slides that review our transit and complete streets portfolio. As Ms. Tally mentioned, there's much more detail online on the CIP map and also in the CIP document. We have a number of projects and links within the document to get into more detail. Many of our programs have projects within programs, so there's layer upon layer of capital project. I did want to highlight two things before we get into the slides. The CIP spend, which is the dollar figure you see on the slides, that represents the level of spend in the ten-year CIP timeframe. So for projects under construction, it might look very small, but that's because we've spent a lot of money on those projects already, and it won't show up in that figure. For projects that are are anticipated later in the CIP, that number will likely change as we get past concept level and into design where we can have a more specific and defensible planning cost estimate. We've also included the fiscal year for projects where we anticipate project completion. And of course, for projects underway, that's that's fairly certain, although, as Ms. Huffman mentioned, there's always snags we hit along the way when when digging in the ground. For those projects that are pre-concept, this represents our best planning estimate, and the implementation adjustment that she reviewed kind of shows how our thinking allows for that flexibility within the CIP, just knowing that through various stages of the project lifespan, we'll likely hit a variety of delays, but we're hoping to stay on track. That's always our goal. So moving into the program, we'll start first with our transit program and the Art Operations and Maintenance Facility. This is thrilling. We're super excited to break ground on June nineteenth of the Operations and Maintenance Facility. This will allow us to have the art fleet completely housed within Arlington for both operations and maintenance. We'll really will we will realize great efficiencies in our ability to provide transit service. And in a change from the last CIP, we have assumed and we have built-in costs for conversion to solar energy as well as charging infrastructure to transition the art fleet to battery-electric buses. The facility construction will include sixteen battery-electric bus charging stations. And then the Phase Two portion of the facility on the right side of the slide assumes installation of additional additional charging infrastructure as the conversion of the art fleet continues over the ten-year CIP. On the next slide, we wanted to go into some of our assumptions that we made, both in the numbers and timing. We do, as I mentioned on the previous slide, anticipate transitioning the art fleet to battery-electric buses. However, we are in the midst of a zero-emission bus study that will inform that decision, and that may change as we revisit the CIP in two years, depending on the outcome of that study and what makes the most sense for our fleet in terms of timing and type of vehicle. But at this point, we've assumed battery-electric buses, and we are piloting, I think, four companies to come and test their buses on our routes. So we're excited about that over the coming, I guess, probably calendar year. We're hoping to conclude that pilot testing in early twenty-three. Similarly, you know, based on all of this, the costs of the facility and electrification may change over the next couple of years prior to the next CIP, dependent on the outcome of these studies. And we've also added some assumptions to these costs based on what we know now about current technology. We may need to purchase additional electric buses to replace CNG buses to meet the level of service that our community expects when riding transit. That's something that we have factored in, and I'll go into greater detail on the next slide. We also may need to make possible additional on-street or off-street infrastructure improvements to accommodate battery-electric buses and their charging needs. That's not baked into this. We don't know yet the outcome of what that might look like, but those are factors that we'll need to consider moving forward. So shifting to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about bus replacement and then expansion, which means adding buses to add more service. At this time, we have seventy-eight buses, and the replacement program contains funding to replace those buses. This program will have higher costs than we saw in the last CIP due to both the higher costs of battery-electric buses, as well as, at this time, the need to purchase more battery-electric buses due to the range limitations of the current technology. So just for example, our next bus order will be for thirty battery-electric buses to replace thirteen CNG buses, just to make sure that we have the buses available to provide the same level of transit service. We've made the assumption that technology will continue to improve and that future replacements following this next order will be made at a one-to-one replacement. We've also programmed fleet expansion to provide that additional transit service that's outlined in the currently adopted Transit Development Plan. And we we anticipate the purchases made through that bus expansion to be one to be assuming that the bus that we buy that's battery-electric will provide the same level of service that we expect now. So there's no additional ratio that we've layered on for the expansion service. But again, I just want to remind us all, before we close out from art and art bus, that these are all sort of estimates until we can get a better sense following the studies. All right, so let's talk a little bit about some of the operational improvements we're making in the right-of-way to accommodate better service for our users for both metro bus and art service. The first project is adding three bus bays at the East Falls Church Metro Rail Station. This will allow for more efficient bus-to-rail transfers and allow and relieve, excuse me, that operational congestion that we're experiencing right now. We received funding from the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission I sixty-six Commuter Choice Program to add bus-only HOV lanes peak period on Langston Boulevard between Veatch Street and Lynn Street. That project and implementation will be complete this coming fiscal year. And then finally, in the later years of the CIP, we've programmed funding in anticipation of needing to expand bus bay capacity at the Sherlington Bus Station, just due to future demand for both art, metro bus, and then dash. The next slide reviews the Crystal City Potomac Yard Transitway. I touched a little bit upon the groundbreaking of the extension to Pentagon City and the Twelfth Street Complete Street Project. Those are underway, and that first segment of the Transitway Extension and the Twelfth Street Project will be complete in Fiscal Twenty-three, with Segment Two of the Transitway Extension to Pentagon City wrapping up in twenty twenty-five. And the result will be dedicated travel lanes from Crystal City to Pentagon City, completing sort of that routing within Arlington, except for the extension and a small piece of Potomac Avenue to the city of Alexandria, which will then wrap up the complete Transitway infrastructure in Arlington in Fiscal Twenty-six. Moving to the next slide, we'll review some of the Metro Rail Station expansion projects that we are embarking upon. The Boston Metro Rail Station West Entrance is in design right now, and we actually have eighty-five million dollars worth of funding requests to to external agencies that we're hoping for favorable decisions within the next month from NVTA and NVTC to fill out the funding package for Boston West Entrance, and then we'll complete design and bring that project through to construction by Fiscal Twenty-seven. For Crystal City East Entrance, we will be wrapping up thirty percent design this fall, and we'll have a better handle on that cost estimate as well once we complete that thirty percent design. And then again, we'll bring that project through to completion roughly by Fiscal Twenty-six. Most of that project is funded externally with the state as a partner due to its commitment to Amazon in that agreement. And then the last two station projects on the slide are in the mid to late years of the CIP and have not begun yet, but we'll be working closely with the community and Metro to add elevators to the Courthouse Metro Rail Station, and then a second entrance to East Falls Church. We'll begin planning in the later years of the CIP. All right, and now we're going to transition to our Complete Streets portfolio. As I mentioned earlier, there's numerous projects within many of these programs in the Complete Streets portfolio. Additionally, we have placeholder projects, line items, in many of these portfolios, just to bless you, anticipate projects that will be coming out of studies that we're currently developing. We don't know yet what those studies will recommend, but we want to make sure that we have funding available when we get to the outcomes so that we're able to then begin design and construction. So for Bike Arlington, we have about a dozen discrete projects and mini programs, as well as one placeholder line item. And when I mention mini programs, I'll give an example. We have our Bike Counter Program. It's a program that does bike counts on our trails and bike infrastructure. That has infrastructure and a cell service thing, I'm not a technical person, that we have to pay for year over year. And so this mini program within Bike Arlington is is funded for that purpose. Similarly, on Walk Arlington, we have about six projects and then a placeholder program for those out-year projects. And I'll just, what I'll do on the Complete Street slide, since we have so many projects, is just touch on a couple, and then we can certainly get into discussion if people have interest later on. But one of the things I really wanted to focus on here is the county-wide pedestrian spot improvements. This is a line item in the Walk Arlington Program that allows us to implement capital projects that are developed out of Vision Zero safety audits. It's those sort of quick spot improvements that improve pedestrian facilities throughout the county. I'll also note that we have several studies in both of these programs. The Arlington Boulevard Trail, which I mentioned earlier, we're also funding an analysis, a feasibility study, really, of a closing the gap in the W and O D trail at the East Falls Church Metro Rail Station. And we anticipate taking on a study of the Custis Trail Corridor to see if renovation and expansion is feasible, because that's such a heavily-used commuter corridor. Shifting to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about Columbia Pike. I've already touched on that a bit. We have four remaining segments of Columbia Pike. Two are moving into construction, and we'll bring the the remaining two to the board for a contract approval later this year or early next year. We also have a handful of Bike Boulevard projects in the Columbia Pike Streets portfolio. We hope to complete the transformation of Columbia Pike by Fiscal Twenty-six. And as I mentioned earlier, we're installing the first eight transit stations this summer, but the remaining transit stations will be installed once the multimodal project completes the site work necessary in order to stations. And finally, we're funding Metro Bus sixteen M service to provide that one-seat ride from Skyline to Crystal City, which will be a real transit enhancement along Columbia Pike. On the next slide, we'll shift to Crystal City, Pentagon City, and Potomac Yard Streets. We have about eighteen projects or mini programs within the complete this Complete Streets program and one placeholder for those out-year projects. I'm just highlighting three on this slide. We have a major reconfiguration of each street to allow for protected bike lanes on the east side. The west side is being realized by private development, and Phases One and Two will complete this bike network and street improvements from Army-Navy Drive to Fifteenth Street. We do have Phase Three populated later in the CIP to align with private development to complete that protected bike lane network down to Twenty-third Street. The CC to DCA multimodal connector, which would provide a bicycle and pedestrian connector from Crystal City to National Airport, is in the NEPA phase right now. We're conducting an environmental assessment to determine what is feasible and what could be the appropriate facility type and alignment that would allow us to provide this connection in a way that doesn't unduly harm the George Washington Memorial Parkway, which is a national park. So we're working closely with our federal partners and the National Park Service to to figure out what type of facility and alignment we can put in this area to provide this transportation facility, but also be sensitive to the character of that national park. Finally, we've just put revised ninety percent design plans on the website for the Fifteenth Street South, South Clark Bell Street Project. This will rebuild Fifteenth Street with bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, as well as complete a trail from Twelfth Street to Eighteenth Street. Right, moving to the next slide. We have one of our larger programs, Improvements Outside Major Corridors, which which focuses on corridors outside of our major corridors throughout the rest of the county. There's about eighteen projects or mini programs and then one project for studies, which are highlighted at the bottom of the slide, and then a placeholder for those future projects. Many of these studies address our Vision Zero high-crash locations, including the Arlington Boulevard, Washington Boulevard interchange, as well as West Gleeb and South Gleeb interchange. We also have some corridor or mini corridor projects identified on the screen. And then one of the projects that we're doing is building out those temporary improvements that were installed on Four-Mile Run Drive, as well as taking on planning, design, and implementation of streetscape improvements along Sherlington Road to the John Robinson Junior Town Square in Green Valley, which implements the streetscape improvements out of the NOC Village Center Action Plan. One of the things I wanted to also highlight on the slide were the studies that we have ongoing within this program. We are currently in the middle of the South George Mason Drive Study. We will also take on a study of the Four-Mile Run Trail feasibility of an over-underpass at Sherlington Road. And we also will study Carlin Springs Road Corridor with a focus on connectivity to trails, particularly around Kenmore Middle School. trails, particularly around Kenmore Middle School. I wanted to highlight our Neighborhood Complete Streets program. The project on the left on 13th Street South between Highland and Walter Reed is almost complete. So the picture on the slide represents what was there before, but if you check it out now, it's really transformational. There's now a sidewalk, an actual sidewalk on the street. There's no CIP spend anticipated because we'll be wrapping up that project this summer. But the Neighborhood Complete Streets Commission, as well as staff, will be coming to you this month for approval on four new projects for the Neighborhood Complete Streets program, two of which are on the screen. We will be adding a sidewalk on South Irving Street between 6th and 7th Street South, which is in the walk zone of, I believe, four schools. Additionally, we're making a really modest improvement on North Fairfax Drive near Rocky Run Park, but it really will increase pedestrian safety and visibility with adding bump outs to the crosswalks, so that pedestrians are more visible to drivers as they're trying to cross the street. And finally, within the Complete Streets portfolio, our last major corridor program is the Roslyn-Boston arterial street improvements project. We have about a dozen projects within this program, as well as one placeholder for future projects. And I will note that some of these projects also have multiple projects layered into them, just because of the complexity of what will be a complete transformation of Roslyn with the removal of the Fort Meyer Drive tunnel and the conversion of that Fort Meyer Drive to a bicycle and pedestrian corridor. It necessitates a whole host of additional improvements to ensure street safety, both during construction and then proceeding and following construction. The other two projects listed on the slide are intersection improvements and the final rebuild of Wilson Boulevard that will complete that transformation between Boston and Virginia Square. Lastly, we have programmed a study along Fairfax Drive, 10th Street, to bring into a vision and concept design some of the safety elements that were identified through that safety audit several years ago. Now we'll look at the Street Safety Improvements Program, which is where we fund the Vision Zero technical work and some of the implementation. Mentioned on previous slides were many of the projects that implement Vision Zero and were determined through some audits, but this is actually where we do that analysis and technical work. It's been just over a year since the board adopted the Vision Zero Action Plan, and we just released the first report card for that program. It's posted on the website. Of note is the implementation of school slow zones and about 90 field safety improvements. And looking forward, Arlington County just launched the Critical Crash Mitigation Campaign to help spread messaging focused on changing human behavior associated with crashes in our streets. And we're grateful for the support from Arlington Public Schools and Arlington families for Safe Streets for supporting us in getting that word out on that program. And just focusing a little bit on the projects or programs you see on the slide. The System Study and Improvements Portfolio reviews issues across the county's transportation network and recommends modifications, sometimes piloting certain treatments to determine their impact on safety, and those treatments can be found in the Vision Zero Toolbox. The Arterial Studies and Improvements Portfolio funds safety audits along some of our major corridors and also supports low-cost implementation where feasible. And finally, for those locations that need more of a reconfiguration or have significant amount of site work involving utilities, there's funding for capital improvements. And by and large, this funding will be used to begin design on more complex projects, and then those projects will be dropped into one of the other Complete Streets programs that I mentioned earlier. And now we'll have on this slide just a couple of our standalone projects that are identified in the CIP. I was grateful for Ms. Tally for going through the Army-Navy Drive Complete Street on the web, so I won't spend time on that project. We have Boundary Channel that's moving into construction, and it's not $3 million, it's more like 19 or 20, but that's the spend we have left in this tenure period. And finally, we added a placeholder for Langston Boulevard multimodal improvements. We have a mix of state and local funding at the beginning of Fiscal 24, so that we're poised to begin further study and design and recommendations that may come out of the Plan Langston Boulevard Initiative. Of course, the timing and level of funding will be revised as specific projects are This slide reviews some of our more operational capital projects. We have our Bus Stops and Shelters Program, which replaces bus shelters as well as enhances certain bus stop locations to be ADA compliant. Our ITS Program focuses on technology to improve efficiencies within the right-of-way parking meters and parking technology. Again, attempts to improve efficiency of our parking infrastructure, as well as replacing meters. Our Street Light Program aims to continue conversion of LEDs, particularly, yeah, LEDs particularly in the Dominion Lights. And then our Traffic Signals Program is a really robust program that attempts to replace about eight signals a year and also repair signals in the hopes of extending their useful So this slide simply covers a snapshot of all of the assets in the right-of-way. In the interest of time, I will not go through it, but I do want to note the green numbers on the slide. That shows the increase in assets from the previous fiscal year, so we'll know that this is part of the slide deck, and you're welcome to review at your leisure. And moving on to capital maintenance, I wanted to touch on our Bridge Rehabilitation and Maintenance Program. Over the next several years, as Ms. Huffman mentioned, we will be replacing two bridges along 4-Mile Run. West Glebe Road is currently under construction now, and Arlington Ridge, Mount Vernon Bridge, will begin shortly thereafter. With the completion of those two structures, this will bring our Bridge Condition Index to about 6.5, which is well within the range we want to see, and all of the county bridges will be rated a six or higher following completion of these bridges, so we can all feel pretty good about the bridge infrastructure as we traverse the county. The CIP also includes a new program that will proactively provide maintenance to sidewalk infrastructure. This is informed by the 2022 Sidewalk Condition Survey, and this will begin in this coming fiscal year with a blitz on tripping hazards, those uneven sort of joints in sidewalks. We'll then begin a zone maintenance pattern after our paving zone maintenance in Fiscal 24 with a 10-year maintenance interval. So we're shifting to paving. We're now at a level of pavement condition index, which is considered good. As you can see from the blue line on the slide, there was an infusion of funding from roughly 2010 to 2018 or so that really allowed us to improve condition of pavement in the right-of-way, which, as we can see from the slide, has significantly increased resident satisfaction in the maintenance of our streets since the last satisfaction survey in 2018. So we do, we have some room to levelize. However, this flat funding that's included in the CIP may put pressure on our ability over time to maintain a good PCI, so this is something we'll need to revisit in subsequent CIPs. And finally, the implementation of transportation capital projects revolves around the trade-offs in the right-of-way and competing priorities for use of right-of-way, as well as layers of guidance from adopted county priorities. We have to develop a methodical approach to identify improvements that continue this decades-long tradition of providing a comprehensive transportation network that complements our growth. And so one of the things that we'll need to embark upon is developing such a process to be able to talk through those trade-offs and methodically identify those projects. As was mentioned earlier, we also face an uncertain future with fluctuating costs of construction, with inflation, demand on contractors, supply chain issues, cost of materials. There's a lot of uncertainties in the CIP that will likely require us to revisit cost estimates and timing as we move forward, but working with our agency partners, we're hoping to realize some efficiencies. Finally, on an eye on evolving technology, we're hoping to improve how we connect people with our transportation options. We have our Mobility Hub Pilot, which will allow folks to get in one place in the right-of-way all of the options that are adjacent to them, to be able to make a mode choice that's not driving. And as Ms. Huffman mentioned, we are currently in the midst of our Transit Strategic Plan Update, which replaces the Transit Development Plan, and this will identify services and facility needs for art to ensure that we're meeting our core mission of providing safe and reliable transit service. And finally, we need to direct our future plans and studies to areas of the county most in need of improvement based on our collective values. So I reviewed some of the study efforts that we will undertake to improve multimodal conditions in the right-of-way. We do not yet have a comprehensive view of those needs countywide or what factors that will be informed by those trade-offs, and so we'll need to undertake that planning effort to understand that better. And with that, I'm actually going to interrupt you if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
And pause there to hear from our Transportation Commission chair, as well as some discussion.
Okay.
Give Mr. Frees a brief, what's the word I'm looking for, stay of having to present to us. Thank you so much, Ms. Crawford. That was incredibly comprehensive and I think really gives a sense of exactly how much is on the plate of the Transportation Division, so we appreciate that very much. We welcome Mr. Slatt, and we look forward to some conversation. So, Mr. Slatt, we'll have you begin.
Thank you very much. In an effort to be efficient, I sent you all an email last night with a bunch of detailed thoughts, but it's my understanding, due to the vagaries of your email system, it won't be delivered to you for another hour. So with your indulgence, I will be a little bit more detailed than I would normally be in a work session like this with thoughts. First off, I just want to say I commend staff. I think this is a fantastic Transportation CIP. I think it is one of the ones that best fits our stated transportation values right from the outset, so bravo, and that's fantastic. I don't want that to get lost in the fact that I'm going to go through a longer list of things that I think should change, so I wanted to get that out there first and foremost. Second, I also want to say the timeline of the CIP adoption makes it very challenging for commissions to really chew through and make, you know, vote on individual recommendations. So I have gone through, this was not the subject of a formal vote, what I'm going to tell you here and recommend to you here. It is my thoughts filtered through what I believe the rest of the commission would largely back me up on, based on discussions we've had over the last six years of Transportation Commission meetings. So I hate those people who speak as if they are speaking for an entire neighborhood when it's just their personal opinion, trying to avoid that. So, jumping into it, I wanted to raise the Army-Navy Country Club Trail, a subject of much discussion over the last 10 years. I want to point out that my understanding is that this draft CIP includes enough funding for the stairs-plus-runnel alternative which staff has put forward, but not enough funding for the trail alternative that staff has shopped out to the community. I think there, one, that it's a little bit disingenuous to bring two alternatives forward, but then only bring funding for one of them forward to the community, but I also think the trail alternative is the way to go, and so we need to be thinking about how we can get enough funding for the trail alternative into the CIP by the time we build this thing in FY '26 approximately. I think e-bikes, e-scooters, all of which are quite available now, will be even more available, even more cheap, and so that grade that's required to get up the Army-Navy Country Club Trail alternative will be much less of an issue than it might be now, but pushing a heavy e-bike up a stair runnel will be even more of a problem than it is right now. Second, I wanted to raise, the board passed Pentagon City plan recently. It includes a number of potential changes transportation-wise. It raises the possibility of, you know, re-studying Hayes Street in front of the Pentagon City Metro for potential improvements, envisions changes to 15th Street to Fern, some of which would come as part of redevelopment, some of which will require county investment. As far as I can tell, and it's a big CIP, if it's possible to miss stuff, I don't believe there's much in the CIP to realize that vision, though there is, of course, the placeholder for Plan Langston Boulevard, which has not yet been adopted and does not have concrete recommendations at this point. Next, I wanted to raise, you know, our budget and our CIP are supposed to reflect our values. It's often said you can really tell what a community cares about if you look at where they're spending their money. Like I said, overall, I think this is great. One concern that I do have as far as how it reflects on our values is we've spent already at least eight years trying to bring our bus stops up to ADA accessibility for those in our community who can't necessarily access them the ways that most of us can. Based on the CIP funding that is in here, it should take, by my math, at least another 10 years, if not 11 years, to get to full accessibility. What's programmed in the CIP is only about $7.5 million, which is both a lot of money and also not that much money compared to what we're spending on other things. For instance, it's about a third of what we're proposed to spend retrofitting streetlights. So I don't love how that reflects on us as a community, that the streetlight retrofit or many other things you could list in the CIP are seeing more of our priority in funding than making sure that everyone in our community can reach transit in order to get where they need to go. I'm going to skip a bunch of the other stuff because I don't want to take a huge amount of your time. Watch for that email in an hour. I will say, I would love to make sure that there's been this push in the community. I've definitely been involved with it to look at a trail connecting Kenmore Middle School to the W&amp;O-D Trail. The language in the presentation differed between Transportation Commission and here. At Transportation Commission, it sounded like a trail feasibility was going to be a follow-up study to the Carlin Springs corridor study. That seems inefficient on the face, that we wouldn't just go ahead and do that all as one body of work, so I would love to see that combined and moved up. And I would love to see more funding for the Street Safety Improvements section. This is a lot of how we implement Vision Zero. That pot of money seems to be doing a lot of things. It's, you know, there were, I think, three different things on the slide about what it's doing. It's capital, and it's also funding arterial studies, and it's also funding these sort of more county-wide systemic studies. A $1.5 million a year is a lot to, that's a lot to try and accomplish in that kind of recurring funding. And then I will try to be that person who doesn't just come telling you, "We need more, we need more, we need more, you should spend more money." I do like to be that person who also comes and says, "Maybe these are things in the CIP that are not the best use of our funds." So I will say, there is a airport viaduct project that has been, came out of the, sorry, the Crystal City Sector Plan to improve the sidewalk on the bridge that currently goes to the airport. I think, given CC to DCA's clear route towards implementation and that JBG Smith has made it quite clear that they intend to pull down the ramp from the viaduct to Crystal Drive, that this project may no longer be an appropriate one to bring forward. The cost and benefit may no longer line up. I will also say there is this project that recently was the subject of public engagement, the 12th Street Project in Douglas Park connecting Monroe Street to Glebe Road. I will say, as currently envisioned, I think this is a project that nobody wants. It spends a lot of money to build an entire street and then uses traffic diverters to ensure that very little cars will actually drive on it. And in the, as currently envisioned, also makes biking less safe or enjoyable in the vicinity. So barring a major rework to make it more useful as a street or no longer degrade bike infrastructure, or both, it seems to be one that is no longer an appropriate priority, given all of the many other things that we would like to do. And finally, I will say, I was intrigued to hear the South Glebe-West Glebe Project pitched as something as a result of Vision Zero crash data. When I was looking at the crash dashboard, I can only find one critical crash in that vicinity. In the past, this project has been mentioned to Transportation Commission largely as a way to avoid car backups onto 395 at the Glebe Road exit. Barring hearing more justification for this project, it doesn't strike me as one that is particularly important, critical, versus the many other things that we are, you know, trying to accomplish in Arlington County. So please, take a look when you get a chance at my detailed email that will come into your inbox at 5 o'clock, but those are the things I wanted to make sure to highlight, given this opportunity here. And I will stick around to hear your discussion, but thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much, Mr. Slatt. We appreciate it. And there is always this tyranny of the calendar with both our budget and our CIP for the first session of the commissions that are impacted, so really appreciate your efforts to bring forward what likely will be the commission's positions and your honesty in caveating them as such. I think you've given us some great fodder for discussion on top of Ms. Crawford's excellent presentation. So colleagues, as noted, I am going to propose that we pause here and go through any questions or discussion we want to have now before moving into Transportation. And Mr. DeFrent, do you want to begin?
Sure, I do now, I will. So I guess I wanted to just, a couple of different projects. So, I guess I wanted to just, a couple of different projects. It's been some time, I guess on the, do you want to, I don't know whether it's you, Ms. Crawford, or who would be the right person on the Army-Navy Country Club timing? Just if you could speak a little bit to the, the timing and the cost, because there are two options. I know this is something that we can also ask for follow-up briefing on, but I would just like to get the sense, I'm trying to remember the numbers that I last saw, which were not in the last couple of weeks. So I don't know if that's you or who would be best.
Sure, I can start that and I'll speak in sort of averages, just because I don't have the precise figures at the top of my head. Staff did recommend the stair runnel option, not just because of cost, but also because of safety. It's about $5 million versus the trail option, which is about $10 or $11 million. The grade of the trail, while inconvenient for travel up the hill, we're much more concerned about travel down the hill and what will inevitably be a hairpin turn onto Memorial Drive as you go under 395. And we had significant concerns about the potential harm for bicyclists potentially interacting with a car, or those that are trying to walk or bike onto the country club property, which is why we recommended the stair runnel option. We agree, it's not a fantastic option in terms of a trail. It's a steep incline to push something up and a number of set of stairs, but we felt that this was the best option within the easement that we have. And I believe that will be completed about 2026, if I remember correctly.
Got it, okay, that's helpful. It sort of syncs with my memory and I think it's probably smart to just follow up as we understand the cost piece and the safety piece and how those fit together. I'll have a couple of others. I'll probably, just one, and then I'll yield the floor, and that's, I didn't notice at the high level on the 12th Streets South, in that project that Mr. Slatt just mentioned, I think probably a briefing might be helpful, but is it possible to sort of summarize what staff's thinking is at this point in moving ahead with the project at a high level? That'd be great.
Sure. This project has evolved over the last couple of years and part of the rationale for closing off the street to through traffic was concerns that we heard from the community about cut through traffic on 12th, which is why we did install the diverters. We did have a fairly robust turnout from recent engagement and we've revised the design and we'd be happy to provide that briefing to you all. We hope that it would provide better bike facilities than that was, which was presented back in, I believe, January, but still be able to maintain that delineation in traffic movements to try to ensure the community's concern about cut-through traffic isn't realized.
Okay.
And to just pick up where Mr. DiFranti left, this has been a really tough one. I think staff has done a really commendable job trying to address the concerns. I worry a little bit that we sort of have this unstoppable force meets immovable object, right, where there is really strong pushback about what is the key provision of the project, which is completing that street grid. And so any efforts to address those concerns, which really are commendable, are going to operate at the exact cross-purpose of the original point of the project. So, I just wanted to ask, can you help us understand kind of the opportunity cost with that project? So, I know it's, I think it's listed as it's part of the Neighborhood Complete Streets and you give us, there are a bunch of really fabulous projects and that. What else would be sort of in the queue for Neighborhood Complete Streets, or would you see that money as kind of freed up and available for other priorities?
So this is actually part of the Columbia Pike Bike Boulevards portfolio. It's not Neighborhood Complete Streets. It's so confusing because the other project is on 13th Street in Douglas Park, but it's a completely different project. So, the 12th Street connection is part of the Bike Boulevards Project, which are along 12th Street South and then 9th Street South, north of Columbia Pike. So we did actually have a new project introduced into the CIP for the Bike Boulevards on 9th Street at Glebe, to improve that crossing, add a signal and improve safety for bicycles and pedestrians. So, you know, if funding were to be shifted from this project, we would likely put it onto the 9th Street Project as part of the Bike Boulevards.
Great. Thank you so much. I happen to be in the neighborhood and I can picture how dangerous that 9th Street Glebe entrance is, so I think that'll be one to follow up on. And I will also note, I had this aha moment as you were, as we were looking at, I think it was Slide 20, we have two 12th Streets South Complete Streets projects. So it may behoove us to rename one of them, at least as long as they're both going to stick around. I was, so I think, for anybody following along at home, I think we are all, speaking at least for myself, very supportive of the Crystal City-Pentagon City 12th Streets South project. So, don't want that one to get caught up in the conversation. Okay, next question is, I think, Mr. Karantopoulos?
Yeah. Sorry.
No, I think it works. So, first of all, thank you, that's so much, I mean, in a, in one shot, that's worth and a word, having been able to compress all this. I mean, it took me in first, third lecture, like several hours to go through your documents. One thing that I want to ask you, I find it exciting that you have this map. I have to object to the icon for transportation being a car, but that's okay, that's not important. I would like to have, and I believe a lot of constituents want that, to have an idea to filter by traffic models. So if we are talking about a strategic goal to shift or model split, so to show bike lanes, to show pedestrian-focused projects, et cetera, I know this is not always easy and it's not clear-cut, I get that. But, you know, even in a slide that I like a lot, Slide 31, you know, that shows, you know, our assets would be great to show, you know, bike lanes next to lane miles of county-maintained, you know, car lanes. So that's one thing, just as a general idea. The second thing is, a very specific one, so there is this street safety improvements, that's Transportation Item 18. So there are approximately $1.7, $1.8 million every year, but this is a lot of stuff there. So there are three, three different projects, quick projects and some others. Is that enough money?
So, I will take a first crack at this answer and I'd be happy for Mr. Leach to correct me if I misspeak, but from what we understand from the team, who implemented 90 safety improvements using less funding than that this past year, the funding levels of this program were selected by the staff by design to be able to implement what they believe they need to do for this program, which is mostly tactical treatments, pilot treatments, and other studies. That's the core of the Vision Zero Program. For the capital improvements that will come out of those studies, we will fund those through the other Complete Streets projects. The goal is not to develop a Vision Zero capital program because that team is not the team that manages capital projects. The capital projects that come from their analyses will be put into Bike Arlington, Walk Arlington, improvements outside major corridors are one of the other Complete Streets projects. So, did you want to speak to the level of funding, Dennis, at a higher level, detailed level?
No, I would say, Ms. Crawford really hit it on the nose. The, it's about developing a pipeline where our transportation engineering and operations staff really does safety analysis, quick build, evaluates the outcomes, and then increasingly feeds those to our TPCPM or other bureaus for implementation. And the level of coordination has been ramped up dramatically over this first year of the Vision Zero Action Plan and has in fact helped shape the CIP. But I think the staff is comfortable with this for studies, for quick build, but increasingly we're going to be building in more and more safety features into our Complete Streets program, but it also feeds into our development pipeline because we do review on every single site plan and use permit. And so what, so it's feeding into that process as well.
Thank you. Are we going to do rounds or can I?
Yeah, I think, well, yeah, absolutely. We're going to, I think, Sir Durcy has more questions. Absolutely. Sir Durcy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is not a programmatic question, more of a funding question. So on the slide, let me pull it up, I guess it's Slide 8, Federal Funding Opportunities. Can you just give a little color on why you're seeking funding for the various IIJA program areas and why you've chosen to match those to specific projects? Specifically, I'm interested in understanding a little bit more about why the Country Club Trail was not also included in reconnecting communities and why more projects weren't, sought for the Raze program, since that's discretionary and includes lots of stuff that we do. So, that's the basis for what I'd love to discuss.
Sure, I can take a start on that. Specifically for reconnecting communities, our understanding, although the Notice of Funding Opportunity hasn't come out yet, is that this is specifically geared towards removing bridge infrastructure, tunnel infrastructure. It's not so much the actual connection to a community such as a trail, it's that heavy infrastructure project. And just to be completely transparent, I'm curious to see how the Fort Meyer Drive project really measures up once we see the Notice of Funding Opportunity, because I do think this is likely geared more towards areas of the country where a highway was built in a complete mile-long stretch of a community that really kind of gashed that community. But I do think the principles of the project should respond well, and so that's why we think this is a good placeholder. Raze. So one of the reasons we wanted to be more strategic with Raze is twofold. One is the intensive application process and the costs of the application process versus sort of the bang for the buck of potentially getting the funding. I think there's about a 5% return rate on applications success, so we really were trying to find our best-fitted project for that. Also, it's a challenge, and I didn't clarify this well enough in the presentation, the right project to identify is the project that hasn't progressed far enough yet. If we were to move forward with every project, assuming federal funding, that would delay most of our projects. It just takes longer meeting the requirements, so you really have to catch that project in its infancy, make the decision, and then go for federal funding. And at this moment in time with Raze, this was our best-fit project. Certainly, we could put another X on the chart in the next couple of years as we look towards other projects that come through the pipeline in our project portfolio and identify potentially another project, but that's just where we were at this point in time. Did you have anything?
Yeah, and I think from last year, we got very good feedback from USDA and OT as we mentioned, that this was a very competitive project. It needed strengthening in terms of cross-benefit, but they felt that it was compelling project. It had basically ANC support, it had lots of community support, and Eastern Front and highways doing the local work for us. All of that puts it in a really good position. But I think, we're viewing the IIJ as a multi-year bill. There's an immense rush to submit everything in the first year. We're really looking at it, what is our plan for five years? And having really good projects that will compete well. We think for this year, it was the only one that we could tee up in a time allotted, that we think we have a good chance of getting funded. But we will certainly look for opportunities in the subsequent years for competitive projects.
I appreciate that. It's all very thoughtful and just to be very clear, I wasn't suggesting that Raze was not, I'm sorry, that the trail was not a competitive project. I just, there's a lot of dollars with the Raze program and I don't want to shortchange what we're seeking from federal spaces. You know, I've had some recent guidance on what they're looking for with the reconnecting communities, which may not necessarily dovetail with what you've learned thus far, which may make things like the trail eligible for it. So we'll talk about that offline, but thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I'll also say, I mean, this is really, this is huge, all of the different things we do, and I kind of know about all of them, but rarely do we put them all together and you kind of go, huh. So, thank you and great presentation. I want to talk just a little bit, to get a little more sort of basic clarity on just the whole Columbia Pike issue, Slide 23, because there, you know, as you've mentioned before, there are all these different projects and there are different CIP, so can you talk a little bit about when, like, I think you said it by FY '26, I think all of the stations will be in, you think, or is it just the eighth that have come now? We have all of the transit stations in by '26?
Columbia Pike will be finished.
Finished, okay.
It's entire, entire in 23 stations and all streets re-constructed.
And that includes the transit signal priority and everything else, that's like, you know, all of the one-seat ride, all of that is going to be?
The idea is building towards full completion by '26.
That sounds great. Can you talk, whoever, about the signal priority? How are people going to experience that? If you're on the bus or if you're in a car on the Pike, how is that going to kind of, how will people experience that?
It is going to be, it's not going to be evident to the rider except in total travel time, looking at their watch and saying, you know, it used to take me 22 minutes to go from here to there, and my gosh, it's now taking 17 minutes or 18 minutes. It is that travel time and it really only happens after this is fully implemented.
Okay, and that's going to be FY '26?
Well, basically, we're starting, Columbia Pike has these multiple phases of construction. So H&amp;I is done and we're installing the transit stations at that end, so they'll all be here. So it is, for Columbia Pike, it's the first target area. In parallel, we're also looking at Langston Boulevard and implementing it, because we control all the signals and it is not facing the same level of construction, which is pretty much, is a pretty disruptive operation.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, well, sort of wanted to get a sense, that'd be, I mean, if we can have it done by '26, I may or may not be on the board anymore by then, but it's been a long, long time, which is great, and let's have a big party and take a ride down the Pike and kind of experience it, and hopefully it'll be all kind of pulled together. Thank you, because it's a lot. Thanks.
Mr. DiFranti.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm glad, thank you, Ms. Garvey, for asking that question because it covered an area of interest. I will, want to follow up a little bit to understand the financing on the two bridges, because I want us to, this won't stun the manager, but I want us to realize all savings now so we can spend, invest as much as we can, but that Slide 6 won't surprise you that Slide 25 and the Nellie Custis. We had a great, helpful conversation some two months back, but I just, there's been a fair bit of discussion of the project since, so I'll ask, talk about that in a briefing. I want to confirm that on the buses, the results of our bus study would impact the number of additional buses that we are projected to buy, right? One of the slides says, you know, I think fiscal '26, that we would buy 30 buses by, for the electric buses by comparison with the current buses. And we'll have that analysis in time, that that figure may change, but you probably wanted to put the higher number in so that we're aware of the challenge, of the need for more buses on the electric side, unless the study shows differently, is that?
Sure, we're happy to walk you through the timelines. So there are two parallel efforts. One is the R-Bus Essoy Study or the ZEB Zero Vision Bus Study, is being undertaken by a more partnership between DOT and OSN. That is well underway. We're beginning to get analysis from consultants in terms of the options. And we are intending to come out with initial findings and board briefings, not waiting until December, but really looking to get more information late summer or fall. In parallel and following board's guidance, we also partnered with Purchasing to issue a RFI to the industry, expressing interest on companies that would want to demonstrate their products here in Arlington. We got responses from all four bus manufacturers that are in the EEB space. We have interviewed all four and we are beginning, we've actually initiated negotiations for lining up the pilots. Because of our spacing constraints, we're doing them sequentially. So we're starting the first one, it will be early fall in September. Our hope is to follow with all of the other companies that will lay fall into spring, because we want to see how these vehicles operate in Arlington, both different terrains, different routes. We want to see how they operate in different seasons. Seasonality actually is, does make a difference in terms of bus performance. So all of that wasn't ready for this draft CIP, but certainly it will feed into the next bus procurement that we'll bring before the board. The next bus procurement would need to be like sometime in calendar year of '23 for delivery in late '24, early '25.
Okay, great. Just that time-
Just, that timing is key, and I'm looking at this bullet that says FY '24 replacement further assumes purchase of 30 BEBs to replace 15 CNGs due to range limitations, but I think I've just heard you confirm that we're first going to get the analysis before that decision.
Correct.
Great.
This CIP is conservative.
Great, great, great. Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Crawford, did you want to add?
I was going to respond to the other questions, unless you had something else.
I'm happy to, absolutely, I also want to give a space that I could take this offline for the chair and for you with respect to Nellie Custis and the bridges.
Okay.
I'm happy to follow up, but I really appreciate your willingness to answer. I just want to sort of be respectful of everyone's time. So, thrilled about the TSP, the signal prioritization at Dinwiddie and the pilot at Dinwiddie and Columbia Pike, because I've heard regularly about the transportation, the stickiness there. So, just really appreciate that. And then, I don't know if you know offhand on the reduced paving, how much we might have saved as a result of reduced paving, or if that's also a number that I should email DES or email you and figure out how best to follow up there. Richard is not jumping up, saying he has it.
Yeah, I don't have that off the top of my head.
But it's, is it in the range of a reasonable question?
Oh, yeah.
For later? Okay, great.
That's how they're finding some stuff.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair, and colleagues.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to follow, Mr. Slott raised that question about the Kenmore connection to the WNOD trail. We definitely have advocacy for this, not only for Arlington families, for Safe Streets, but I know folks at APS have been interested in this, right? This is an area we really love to see more kids getting to school multimodally, right? To reduce the traffic in that area. Could you just give us a sense of, I'm looking for it in the CIP, but the, kind of an orientation of when that study would come forward? Any reactions, Mr. Slott, thought about, you know, why it's different enough from the Carlin Springs project to be worth separating, or if the funding were available, would you recommend doing those two together?
Sure. So, the first thing I'll note is this is pre-scoping, pre-concept. We have no idea yet of what this type of a study would look like, the scale and the scope. It's a concept that we hope to bring forward. We have two or three staff that we can conduct studies throughout the course of any fiscal year, so as you saw from the presentation, even on this slide, we now have an accumulating list of studies. At this point, we do anticipate bringing that Carlin Ring, Carlin Springs Road corridor study forward in fiscal '24. Thinking logically as a planner, we do the corridor study, and then we do the ensuing feasibility studies or recommendations. There's no reason you couldn't put that in the, not necessarily the opposite order, but do it all at one point. That could be part of the scope. The funding is there. As I mentioned, we have a line item for studies within that program and the CIP. It's just a matter of scoping it the way that makes the most sense. If it does become a larger study, that might bump another study into the next fiscal year because it's not an unlimited amount of funding, staff capacity, or really, community capacity to participate in studies. So, I hope that clarifies.
That's a good answer. Yeah, it seems like it's a capacity issue as much as also planning sequentially might make sense there. No, I know we always joke that, for some reason, CPHT is the only department that gets to come forward with their work plan and say, you've got to prioritize our work, and everybody else just has to do what the board keeps keeping on your plate. So, I appreciate that answer. Mr. Carettonis, over to you.
Yeah, thank you. I have to say, South Carlin Springs is a very interesting place. We, I mean, you have already invested a lot of staff hours in working on that, so I think seeing dividend from that work already would be, is only appropriate. I'm really very interested in, this is under, what was that, number nine outside major corridors, right? So, investments. So, that was one thing that I wanted to ask, actually.
Oh, Mr. Carettonis, if you could turn your, is it?
Yeah, I have, I have bubble up today. I will take this one.
A mass, a graveyard of my thoughts.
So, okay, so, one thing I wanted to ask you as well is on, what am I here? So, on the Pentagon City Plan, the Green Ribon concept, is this completely, I mean, I haven't seen in the CIP any approximation to that, anything that is related to that directly at least. So, is that completely out of scope for the CIP? Is it outside? Is there, is there a place for us to invest or to, you know, pre-invest in the Green Ribons? With the Amazon development, with some pipeline, I see a significant part of Green Ribbons begin to, you know, to be developed and delivered in the next few years. But do we have absolutely no CIP approach there?
We do not have a CIP program or project within the transportation CIP for that. This would definitely need to be something that we coordinate heavily with parks.
So, we see that as a parks item, not as a walkability part of, walkability infrastructure? Okay.
So, influenced by slide nine, I'd just love to hear any thoughts that you have at this point about how you intend to study what might be needed in equity emphasis areas, if that's the paradigm that you're going to adopt moving forward as a way to think about equity in certain places. I'd love to just have you describe a little bit more about how you intend to determine, first of all, how you're going to conduct studies, and from that, what we might see in future CIPs, influence from any results that you gain.
I can start? We have had longstanding experience as an FTA grantee doing Title VI analysis, so we're looking at neighborhoods in Arlington or census blocks that have low income. We look at percentage minorities, we look at limited English proficiency areas, and we try to address our facilities to meet the needs of those communities. So, that is sort of our most experience in transportation. As part of Vision Zero, we've done a full one-year evaluation of Vision Zero crash data, injuries, and how it intersects with the COG equity emphasis areas, and looking at, are there areas that need more attention? So, those are learning experiences, and we are trying to sort of, what have we learned from those types of analysis and how, what influence our future investment decisions? I think that some of the studies that Ms. Crawford referenced are specifically being done for, these are parts of our community that have not seen a lot of investment, have safety issues, and warrant investment. So, think Four Mile Run, South George Mason Drive, Sherrlington Road are all things that are being added in the CIP as, initially as studies, but ultimately teeing those up for capital investment. That's the intent.
So, I appreciate that. I would just also hope that we can add to that maybe some way of prospectively looking at what are the types of investments, which may not necessarily always be large, that could improve other goals beyond safety. You know, obviously, that's the baseline, but as we think about some of the areas in our community that may benefit from, you know, the provision of more capital bike-share locations, even though they don't meet the typical criteria for where we place them, but would otherwise make it a lot easier for people to connect to transit, you know, there's a direct engagement of people in these equity emphasis areas that might prove useful in getting beyond, what do we need to do to make sure things are not broken, but to move to a higher level of investment? So, I would encourage that. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Thank you so much, colleagues. Thank you again, Ms. Crawford, Mr. Leach. We really appreciate the conversation and really the insight into exactly how much is going on and underway. Thank you. And Mr. Freeze, we look forward to hearing from you on our significant investments in the region's transit backbone.
This one.
When we have our session with DTS, we've got a capital investment problem right here. All right, unless, unless there are further introductions to be made. Mr. Freeze, we welcome you and give you the reins.
Perfect. Well, thank you. So, I'm going to be very quick. I just have two slides on Metro to get you through the end of the presentation. So, we're going to talk about the county's contributions to Metro, and I think you all are aware that, you know, the county's a funding jurisdiction under the original WAMADA compact, and we are responsible for funding the transit systems, capital and operating needs with capital. WAMADA's fiscal '23 budget is just under $2.4 billion, and over six years, it totals at just over $14 billion. On the screen here, you can see the types of projects that Metro invests in on an annual basis, which are for rail, bus, and paratransit projects. To give you a high-level overview of how their capital budget is funded, in fiscal '23, about 15% is from federal formula funding, about 12% is from state and federal PRIA funding, 21% is from the regional dedicated funding, a few, $500 million approved a couple years ago, and 39% is from the issuance of debt backed by that dedicated funding. And then, the remaining balance of about 12% is what the local jurisdictions are required to contribute currently. When you compare to the total budget, Arlington funds about 1.3% of that total on an annual basis. To provide context of what that 1.3% is, in the past, Arlington was typically responsible for about 3% to 4%, so about triple to four times of that amount of their total capital budget. So, it's a dramatic reduction of the share of the total capital budget as it has grown, and that is due to that dedicated funding and the support that provides to their capital plan. So, if we go to the next slide, we'll look a little bit more at the county's contribution specifically, if it comes up. Let's give it a second. There we go. Perfect. So, what I want to show here is the county's contributions, and so if you look in the middle, in the orange section, not the green up top, I'll talk about that in a second, but the orange section shows the county's contributions, which are $31 million in fiscal '23 and escalating up to $41 million in total by fiscal '232. Of these amounts, 10 to 15 million annually is funded from state transit aid that the county receives, and then the remaining 21 to 25 million comes annually from general obligation bonds. Up above in green, I wanted to show this because it shows the impact of that new dedicated funding on the predictability of the Metro capital subsidies. This section shows what we had in the adopted fiscal '19 through '28 CIP, which was four years ago. As you will see, the variance at the bottom, in the green line at the very bottom, shows that we are basically right where we thought we would be four years ago. This compares to previous subsidies where in the 2000s and the 2010s, we saw a lot less predictability, and twice, there were significant one-time obligations of 20 to 40 million in addition to our normal subsidy that were unexpected and we had to come up with funding for on a rather rapid basis. So, really just kind of shows that with that new dedicated funding, it really has brought at least the local jurisdictional capital funding to a level that we can more reliably predict and plan for in our capital plans. So, that in a nutshell is Metro. Not really much else to say there. That wraps up the transportation section, so we'll open it up to any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Mr. Freeze, I'll open the floor of questions and give Ms. Garvey the first.
Yeah, I'll just pick up right where you left off. It's great that we can plan better and we know what's, however, looking at what Metro's dealing with, I wouldn't be surprised if something's going to happen that we're going to have to probably come up with more. I mean, they're in a world of hurt right now, right, with the pandemic, and if the, I mean, maybe you see things more positively, but it feels like they're having to kind of really relook at everything.
Fortunately, it's an operating budget issue that they're primarily dealing with, which is with the pandemic on the capital side.
So, we're only worried about capital. This is correct, right? And I completely went to operating.
I do think on the operating side, we will have, we'll have to have discussions as the next few fiscal years go by, that there is significant risk on that end. On capital, we're fortunate that with this dedicated funding, that to the extent that there are significant increases or decreases, they do have that ability to leverage debt against that funding source, which is able to control a lot of that variability. So, it really means that the local, our local capital subsidies, at least that piece, will hopefully remain more predictable. But operating, you are correct, there is a lot of, there are a lot of headwinds facing that subsidy that we'll have to continue monitoring.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, that's where I'm most worried. Forgot we were just doing capital right here, but thank you. I'm glad to know that you worry too.
All right, Mr. DeFrent?
I have a share of the concern, and operating has been where, is so dominated that I almost worry about capital just because I'm so concerned about the operating piece. There would need to be a renegotiate, for that variance to change, or if there are discovered additional capital challenges in the years to come. It feels to me as though there would need to be a renegotiation of the 50/50, the agreement, and then that would be likely to be a longer trajectory. We would not be very likely, because of the bonding that you described, to see a shift in the short term. It would be, at the minimum, two, three years in budget terms before we'd see a capital big change, if we were to see any change. That's sort of part political, and colleagues may have thoughts on that as well, but I didn't know if you had any thoughts, because I do still worry that, we still have a long way to go to catch up on capital to good repair on Metro, and I do still worry that there could be unforeseen capital challenges, and also, I'm not forever confident that the 50/50 will stay the agreement. I'm pretty confident, but I'm not forever confident. So, I didn't know if you had any thoughts about, about that on the capital, in the medium to long term, and our relative confidence that we, for at least a year, two years, that we would be in a, in a non-high variance situation.
And are you speaking to the actual WAMADA compact and that agreement, or the PRIA funding and that, the $500 million regional?
The, I'm actually, the compact agreement.
The dedicated funding?
Yeah.
The dedicated? Well, on the dedicated side, I'm not aware of, I guess, what's going on on that side, but you know, from that perspective, for Virginia's share, we do contribute a small portion, which is about $8 million currently. There's 27 million the local jurisdictions cover of Virginia's roughly $150 million share. But you're correct, if there was something to change in that agreement and how it's shared, we may, depending on, you know, there's a lot of mixes of funding that go into that, but if that changes, we could, we could go up, we could go down. You know, initially, we weren't expecting to be part of that regional dedicated funding, so that was new to us. So, there could be, if that does change, there could be an increase or a decrease to the county subsidy specific to that part.
Okay.
The only thing I'd add is just recall how complex that funding agreement is from the Virginia side, right? I mean, passed through legislation, it includes rerouting, taxes that were rescinded and reinstated to apply solely for this, you know, the rerouting of NVTA funds, the local pieces. I think it would be a little hard to unwind it, not to say it's impossible, especially if you have a very motivated General Assembly. But I think the only question I had is just, you know, speaking of this conversation about capital versus operating, it's such a source of frustration for me that the feds are consistently so willing to pay for capital and never for operating, right, when the need is. Have, you know, I think a fair amount of money dedicated toward systems like Metro in the infrastructure bill, which is ongoing. Do you have a sense, just from conversations about WAMADA, how they're thinking about those new monies in their overall capital budget? Is it just an opportunity to kind of achieve more beyond the regional capital funding agreement? Is there a point at which you would ever offset the contributions of the regional entities, including the localities?
Yeah, and I don't have enough information right now to answer that, but I can look into it and get back to you.
Okay. And I know, I'm sure it's a very live question about how they're thinking about it too. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Thank you, yeah. Feds are willing to spend for capital, but it's still not enough when it relates to Metro, and I'll just leave that editorial comment aside. Mr. Freeze, a couple of questions. So, you know, first, how is Metro doing in terms of, you know, making sure that it's able to expend, you know, a good percentage of its capital budget on an annual basis? You know, for a while, it was a weakness of the organization. It had gotten, you know, pretty good. Has it been sustained over the last couple of years?
weird years?
It, it does seem like they're executing much better than they, they used to be executing. You know, I think they've, they've really beefed up their, you know, their, their capital execution and even their staffing to, to execute. So I, I do think that, and even just, even the way they are budgeting for expenditures, they've, it's definitely not like it was 10 years ago where, say, you know, only a third or half of the, the funding was, was spent and it was carried over. So it's, it's definitely in a better place, at least from an execution perspective. I don't know the exact percentages now of where they are. I just know that they've invested a lot in trying to get a higher level of execution versus what they budget. And also recognizing that we're budgeting more on, trying to budget more on an actual basis and not, you know, not, not, not budgetary so that it's more aligned up with what they're executing on. So, so those, those have gotten closer. But again, I don't have the exact numbers right now, but it has, I would just say, you know, over the years, it has definitely gotten better in terms of them executing on what we provide them.
Terrific. And maybe this is more for NVTC colleagues. As it relates to the 8,000 series rail cars, which I know are a future priority, are there any talks, discussions on how to make sure that procurement doesn't result in the same kind of immediate safety issues that we've seen with the 7,000 series?
Yes, it's a great question. Definitely discussion of that. I mean, my understanding is it's a different vendor, right? So that's step one. I, I think, given the nature of how unforeseen the issues of the 7,000 series are, there's no guarantee, right? I can imagine they can solve for the, the last war, right, of the same problem. But I, I haven't heard anything beyond just the emphasis on the fact that it is a different vendor. Have you?
Yeah. I asked that direct question because I was so worried about it. And the answer from, I think, Mr. Weiderfeld was, it's a completely different process. There are no processes for building the 8,000 series that are at all in the 7,000 series. But as much as he has done to this point, I think we share the agreement, all of us, that, you know, that's great. We want to see what the next GM is going to do because there has to be accountability on the question you're asking. Because he did a lot, but the last, you know, my level of confidence, all of ours changed over the last few months, and all of the communities changed in the last few months based on, on that. So, I mean, I just, it is exactly the question I was worried about. I don't know.
Yeah. And I'll just add as a comment perhaps to you and, you know, just to the broader world who may be watching. You know, it seems like since the Metro Rail Safety Commission is now on board, hopefully they can be integrated into the process of the 8,000 series. Not so much to, it, it's more to just share the responsibility and, you know, the benefit of just more eyes watching to maybe catch things that could be problems later. It just seems like we have the asset, we ought to use it. And, you know, just Ms. Garvey, I, I am just struck by how you led this off. And while it is an operating concern that we are very much all really going to have to wrestle with over the next few years, you know, Metro remains both necessary. So from the capital program, everything that they need, you know, I, I feel comfortable providing, provide, you know, with the proper oversight. But we must acknowledge that Metro today is far from being useful for people who ride it, and it won't be useful for quite a while. And so we will be hopefully engaged in making sure that that changes as quickly as it can.
Especially our yellow line riders.
Question, oh. That's all right. I just had a question on this conversation we just had. I'm remembering that the cars that Metro buys, like, I don't know if it's the 7,000 series, that like Metro's like the only place that uses these cars almost? Is that, am I remembering that correctly, Mr. Dorsey?
That's been how, they, they've essentially been custom builds for, for Metro.
Yeah. So that would, to me, there's a lot of dangers of just right in there when you're the only unicorn that you got and nobody else has it. Yeah.
This is actually relevant to, to capital, to capital planning here because one of the reasons why they're custom built is because, and not to the state of the art with international standards, is because maintenance facilities of Metro cannot deal, for example, with, you know, these complete trains that are completely connected. They, you know, the, so there are, there are a lot of technical reasons that I don't believe they're in the plan of Metro to change. So therefore, the, the Series Eight will be an improved version of, of the latest, of the Yes. So I, I wanted to ask you something else. What is our feeling that, you know, the capital investment of Metro and the, and the state of good repair in, in our territory? So in, in the stations that we have here, et cetera? What is, what is the status? So Roslin was a, a point of concern before, so for example. So is, is Metro delivering for us in, inside their capital budget?
In terms of renovation or
Yes.
improvements to, to the orange line or orange silver
Yeah.
stations and blue as well? I, I don't know. I haven't looked actually lately at, at what their plan of reinvestment is. I know that they've been going around and focusing on, you know, the stations that, that needed the most critically. But I can get that information for you and see where they are, if there's planned reinvestment. I know that they had done some, was it, I started in 2009, the last 10 years, they've done some improvements. But I don't know, you know, in terms of, are they at 100% right now, fully renovated, or there are more improvements that need to be done. But I can look and see what their, what their plans are in the Arlington County stations.
Yeah. Yeah. Because I, I personally, and I have to echo your crystal here, just the moment when Rideshare goes up again, then we have a yellow line surprise. And that's just not right. It really throws us back every single time to square one. And that's just frustrating. I mean, when we have to, you know, to justify the biggest wanted piece.
Yeah. Well, and that's, I mean, I think it's sort of emblematic, symbolic, symptomatic of the fact that these tend to be system issues, right? I mean, that's, that's the tunnel issue on the yellow line. So even if we were to emphasize the importance of the maintenance of the stations, we actually, like, it should be said, the CIP includes tens of millions of dollars for second elevators, for station entrances, right? So there's a lot that's within our control, what is not, unfortunately, our tunnel repairs, traction power upgrades, all of these things that are systemic. So, yeah, strong agree. I know Mr. Dorsey had another question. So we'll give it back to you, sir.
Thank you. And again, I don't know if this is from Mr. Freeze or NVTC colleagues, but as it relates to Metro's desire to stoke and encourage more joint development around facilities for housing production and other means, how are those proceeds being, or how are those anticipated proceeds being factored into the capital budget? And could they provide a future buffer against any variance that could occur? Or is that by policy going to not provide general relief for jurisdictions that are not a part of the joint development opportunities?
Yeah. I thought, I thought the joint development stays more like within the, the area where, where, where the joint development occurs. But after look at that piece, it's, it's been a while since I've looked at, you know, where they do the joint development. But that, that's what I recall is that it doesn't go to the entire system, that it stayed within the region. But I'll, I, I can get you the better information on that.
Thank you.
All right. Unless there are any parting comments from Mr. Freeze, thank you for the work that you do. And we appreciate the conversation. I think that concludes today's work session, if that's correct. All right. We will be back at this work session table in the coming weeks to discuss the other areas of the budget, including next Tuesday, the 14th, we'll meet on facilities, parks and community conservation, which we look forward to discussing, new name and all. So without further ado, we are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.